Yeah, pretty much the whole side. I don't know about the last guy in the back.
Commissioner Dwar, Trojan absent, Commissioner Vasquez?
Wait, let me call the meeting to order. I was waiting for the thumbs up. I'd like to call the February 20th, 2013 Planning Commission meeting to order. May I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Trojan absent, Commissioner Vasquez?
Here.
Chair Holt?
Here.
Commissioner Dwar?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Medina?
Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Legion? Leading salute. I pledge allegiance to the class. For each matter considered by the commission, there will first be a staff presentation, followed by a presentation from the project applicant. Testimony from supporters of the project will then be taken, followed by testimony from those in opposition. The applicant will have the right to a final rebuttal presentation prior to closing the public hearing. In accordance with Section 13 of Article 2 of the Planning Commission Rules and Regulations governing length of public debate, all public testimony from those in support and in opposition of the project will be limited to three minutes per person. The three lights on the podium next to the microphone will indicate the amount of time remaining for the speaker. The green light will be turned on when the speaker begins. The yellow light will come on with a soft bell ring when one minute is remaining. The speaker should be completing the testimony by the time the red light comes on with the final bell indicating time has expired. All public testimony must be presented to the commission at the podium. If you challenge these land use matters in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raise in oral or written testimony at or before the close of the hearing. Agenda approval, are there any changes or modifications to the agenda?
Good evening, Chair Holt, Mike Sanchez, Development Resource Management Staff. Yes, there's one suggested change on tonight's agenda, and that's new matter A, consideration of variance applications V-1301 and conditional use permit C-12145. Staff is recommending that matter be placed on the consent calendar. There's been no formal opposition cited on this particular project, and staff would request that the chair bring that out to the audience in the event that someone is here for that. But to date, we've received no opposition to that and recommend it be placed on the consent calendar. Aside from that, you'll have the new matter B, which will be heard, which is an appeal hearing, as well as the workshop presentation by Mr. Kaler.
Great, thank you. With that, is there anyone who has any questions or concerns about the agenda, specifically moving new matter 8A, which has to do with a property on Olive and the Tower? It's reducing a setback to allow for a patio, similar to actually some of the other patios that are there, but with a little bit different setback. Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions or concerns about putting that on the consent calendar? Is there anyone from the commission that has concerns or questions about putting that on the consent calendar? All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to move new matter 8A to the consent calendar. I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson Smith, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Dwar. With that, we've moved matter 8A to the consent calendar. The agenda as a whole, is there anyone that has any comments or questions about the agenda as a whole? Oh, did I? Sorry, thank you. All those in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Sorry about that, it's been a long day. And now, moving on to the agenda as a whole. Any questions from the audience on the agenda as a whole? Any questions from the commission on the agenda as a whole? I would entertain a motion on the agenda. I have a motion from Commissioner Vasquez, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Hanson Smith. All those in favor of the agenda, please say aye. Those opposed? Agenda passes. Consent calendar. All consent calendar items are considered by the planning commission to be routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless requested, in which event the items will be removed from the consent calendar and considered prior to approval of the consent calendar. If any member of the public wishes to have a specific item removed for discussion, be present when the meeting is called to order and the chair announces the consent calendar. Commission approval of consent calendar items for which there is no discussion shall constitute adoption of the staff recommendation. We now have three items on the consent calendar. We have item 8A, which just got moved to the consent calendar. We also have the minutes from December 5th and the minutes from February 6th. Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions or concerns about the consent calendar items? Seeing none, any commissioners have any questions or concerns about the consent calendar items? Commissioner Dwar?
Chair, I was not present during February 6th meeting, so I abstain from voting on February 6th meetings.
All right.
Minutes.
All right. Any additional questions or comments about the consent calendar items? All right, with that, I would entertain a motion. I have a motion from Commissioner Hanson Smith, do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Vasquez. All those in favor of the consent calendar, please say aye. Opposed? Consent calendar passes. We'll now move straight into new matter 8B. Consider an appeal of the action of the Development and Resource Management Director approving variance application number V-12-003 and related environmental findings.
Good evening, Chair Holt, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Israel Trejo with the Development Resource Management Department. The application before you is variance application number V-12-003 filed by Patrick Eller. The subject property is located on West Dunn Avenue in between South Thorn and South Fruit avenues. The highways 99 and 180 are located to the north. The property outlined, subject property outlined in yellow is surrounded by single-family residences to the south, east, and west. The property has the general plan designation as light industrial, however, it's zoned R3, which allows for residential uses. Even though they are not consistent pursuant to Section 12 607a1, since this property had its residential zoning prior to 1987, it's allowed to develop with residential uses even though it's not consistent. From the subject property to the east, there's medium-high residential, and that's predominantly developed with multifamily uses. The application is a request to allow for reduced lot width, lot depth, lot area, and reduce setback to freeway right-of-way. The municipal code requires a 50-foot setback, and the applicant is proposing a 41-foot setback. These, the subject properties were annexed in from the County of Fresno to the City of Fresno in 1980. When they were annexed into the city, they were non-conforming as to lot width, lot depth, and lot area. They didn't have non-conforming lot setback because they were not developed. There's a lot line adjustment that was filed with this application. The property at 348, as I mentioned, it was developed, it was annexed into the city in 1980. It was developed on the common property line with 342. So, the applicant has submitted the lot line adjustment to resolve that situation. What they're doing is moving the common property line from 348 and 342 West Dunn, they're moving that property line over six feet to resolve that issue. And the applicant also owns the property at 338. What he's doing is moving that common property line over to the east to allow two somewhat equal parcels to develop. The director approved the variance application October 19th, 2012, which commenced a 15-day appeal period, and in response to the notice of granting that was issued for this project, one appeal letter was received. The first issue noted in the appeal letter was that the variance is in opposition to various FMC sections. These sections relate to the R1 zone district, and this property is zoned R3. It is noted that the variance application is a request to allow for variances from the R3 property development standards. Along with the property development standards, the applicant has requested a reduced setback from 50 feet to 41 feet, which is consistent with development in the area. And the required findings for variance have been made to allow for this reduced setback. The second issue raised in the appeal letter was that most major cities require a greater setback to highway right-of-way. Additionally, recent studies by the California Air Resource Board recommend that homes have a setback of 500 feet from freeways. Staff researched various cities throughout the valley, and Bakersfield requires a setback of 30 feet from the main building to highway right-of-way. The County of Fresno, as well as the City of Clovis, both require a 50-foot setback from main building to highway right-of-way. The other issue raised in the appeal letter is that the house is within 500 feet of the right-of-way. Now, staff researched the requirements from the California Air Resource Board, and what that states is they recommend avoiding citing new sensitive land uses within 500 feet of a freeway. The Air Resource Board, they make recommendations, however, they do not establish regulatory standards. Allowing this development would be consistent with what's in the neighborhood now. Staff has required a six-foot-high sound barrier along the rear of the two subject parcels. We've required air conditioning or mechanical ventilation on the houses that will be built if approved. And we also required exterior doors to be a solid-core wood to help with any noise. And finally, required acoustic baffles at the attic. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the category, Class 5 categorical exemption, and also approve the variance application subject to the conditions of approval dated October 19th, 2012. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this time for staff? Commissioner Hanson Smith?
I guess my biggest concern is just how close it is to the freeway, and with, you know, the recommendation of 500 feet by CARB. Is it possible to include, you said the air conditioning, heating, have like the filters that are, you know, stronger, like, can I pronounce HEPA? H-E-P-A? One of those?
We required the mechanical ventilation or air conditioning. We did not, you know, specify the filters that are in there.
But is that mostly for, so they don't open up their windows? Does that do anything to the particles that are being generated by freeway traffic at all, or is that just mostly sound?
I understand it to be mostly for sound. It's a requirement that we generally see on sound studies.
So is it possible to have those filters?
But I will say that most modern HVAC systems do have filters that will help with your air quality. That's why we tell people to stay inside on days when air quality's poor. The biggest key to their success is people maintaining them and changing them, so a reminder to all of you, go change your air filters tonight.
How about trees? I saw there was two trees required. Is there any way to put trees in the back required, just for the same thing, just pollution being generated?
That can be made a requirement, however, we did not make that requirement for this project.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Reed?
Israel, can you put up the aerial image, please, from the presentation? So you indicated that other properties here in this same area are not conforming, but it looks, and wanted to verify that, because as I'm looking at the drawing here, it does look like that one section kind of juts out a little farther than the other properties do. So can you explain that statement to me, just so I understand?
This project where I have the arrow at now, that is not at the required 50-foot setback, so that's non-conforming, which is, I lost the arrow, this property here. And additionally-
So that's closer than 50 feet?
Yes.
To the freeway?
Yes, to the freeway right-of-way. So the right-of-way is-
I see the right-of-way, okay.
Additionally, the house to the east, directly east of the subject site, those are closer than 50 feet to the highway right-of-way.
Okay, yeah, I mean, because I have concerns about going in what I think is the opposite direction from where we ought to go from a residential standpoint with, I think we should be moving towards greater setbacks rather than lesser setbacks. So that does give me some concern that, you know, we're talking about reducing a setback to freeways, right-of-ways because of the concerns about air quality. However, I am also want to be aware of the fact that if that's an existing condition, then we have to factor that into our decision as well, so I just wanted to get some clarification from me on that, so thank you.
Additional questions at this time? Commissioner Dwar?
Thank you, Chair. This is light industrial land use area, and these two lots will be used for residential purposes or for industrial purposes?
They'll be used for, there's a plan to develop the middle parcel. The parcel with the address of 342 to develop with a single-family residential, there is no plan to develop the property at 338.
What about 348 in the future?
348 is developed with, it has a single-family house on there now. The upcoming downtown development code, which may be approved in 2013 or 2014, it calls for this subject property neighborhood to be developed and planned for general neighborhood uses. So where Thorn is labeled, to the east of Thorn, that's proposed to have residential land uses, so the industrial's going to go away if the downtown development code is approved.
I see. Can you go back to that aerial photo? I have another question. What about 338? Is there any future plan, or that will be developed as industrial, residential, or what?
The zoning is R3, which is for residential, so it would allow for residential uses. But there is no plan at this time to develop.
Thank you.
Additional questions of staff at this time by the commission? Does the project applicant have anything they want to say?
My name's Patrick Eller, and I did put something together for each one of the council members to look at, which is just kind of an overview of everything that's gone on here, just to give you, you know, the big picture, and I included some pictures as well that I'd like to. Okay, so I have a copy for everybody up there. I have one more if somebody needs one. Actually, I don't, I'm sorry. So, starting with the cover here, we have two pictures of the single-family home that was actually relocated onto the property on, actually, it was relocated back in 2009 on October 6th. I've included a copy of the relocation investigation that was done prior to the building being relocated to the property. If you turn to the last page, you'll see a little summary there. Actually, on the first page, paragraph 1, the relocation investigation concludes that the proposed building may be relocated in use per its approved occupancy, provided that all conditions in this investigation are compiled with, all necessary permits are issued, and all required work was completed and approved by the Development Department. I'm including a copy of the documentation that the building was escorted by the California Highway Patrol when it was moved over. Behind that, we've got the building permits that were issued. And we had actually dug out the footing, and we're getting ready to set the house down on its foundation, when the inspector, Jim Melton, came out, and he noticed that the house, 348, was encroaching on the lot by six inches, so, yeah, six inches. So he put a stop on the project. And so I got into a legal deal with the neighbor there, and it took me two years to get that worked out, so I gave him the six feet, actually, you know, so he'd be legal on his side, and I'm going to move the building over, and I adjusted the lot to the east there too, so we'll have two even-sized lots. And I do have some dialogue there from the city, let me see, that would be regarding the issue when I went in, yeah, that would be on page 16. And then on pages 17 and 18, you have documentation of the new surveying and lot line adjustment. So that's all I wanted to include, just so you guys would have, you know, a full idea of what's going on there. So the building is there, you know, it's still sitting up on blocks, it's been there for several years, and, you know.
Any questions for the applicant at this time? Commissioner Vasquez?
Thank you. On this picture that you have here, this building, is that the one that's currently on 342?
That's 348, the one that you see that's up in the air there to your right?
Right.
That's 342.
That's 342.
That's the subject property, yes. So we're going to move it over to the east, six feet, set it down.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hanson Smith?
You mentioned earlier about having trees in the rear of the, between the freeway and the house. Would that be something that owner would be willing to add as a condition for this?
Sure, yeah, we do have one large tree there, right directly behind the house there.
Yeah, I see that one.
To the north, we would be happy to, you know, add a couple more trees.
Okay, I think that would help with the particulates and from the freeway generated, so-
Sure.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Commissioner Medina?
Is the house at 348, that is not occupied right now?
No, it's not. It was occupied up until maybe, I'm thinking about a year ago.
Uh-huh.
It was vacant, then it was occupied, now it's vacant.
So you own the property at 342 and 338?
That's correct.
Okay, and a different owner on 348? Okay, all right, thank you.
Additional questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is the-
I'm sorry, I have one other question.
Commissioner Medina?
Is it, is this going to be a rental, or are you going to?
It will be a rental.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dwar?
No, it was answered. I had the same question that-
I do have the approved plans that I had from 2009 with the inspection card as well, if anybody would like to examine.
I don't think we need to, but thank you for bringing them in. Is the appellant here?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name's Bob Mitchell. I'm representing the Golden West Side Planning Committee. And our imposition to this reclassification or rezoning is the fact that, as your city presenter mentioned, it is going below what you currently have as a minimum setback, which is 50 feet. And the 500-feet setback, as explained by CARB, is what is being recommended throughout the country, in the state of California, for very good reasons. The particulate from the freeways are caused, the worst of them are caused by diesel transportation. And as you know, we have an enormous amount of diesel transportation through our valley because of our plentiful crops and the type of industry we have in our community. That freeway- That freeway that is right behind the question property is heavily traveled. So what you're doing by approving this, if you should find that to be what you wish to do, is setting those future children or people who will live in this rental unit at risk, which I think is abhorrent. When the future planning for the city calls for a minimum setback of 500 feet, unlike what Clovis has, and I'm not aware of whether they're revisiting their own setbacks, but I know what is being done in other metropolitan cities such as the size of Fresno, if not bigger. They're requiring even a greater setback than 500 feet. And I cannot imagine how we, as Commissioners, would approve this, knowing that the city is embarking on a new plan, which is going to require a 500-foot setback. Your presenter stated that it is going to be developed in the future for residential. You may be setting a, gosh, I'm lost for the word right now. Thank you. Thank you. You may be setting a precedent by doing this, wherein a future developer might say, well, your most recent development on that piece of property in that general area allowed for 41 feet. And though there may be present existing properties there which are not in conformity, if you look at that area, I do not think you would find any from ground up development within the past two decades. So those are old residences which have been there long before the freeway was even put in. So we're requesting that you deny this variance for the health factors, for the future development that we're trying to see come into our community. And I will be happy to answer any questions any of you may have.
Are there any questions of the appellant at this time? Commissioner Hanson Smith?
So if we were to, kind of what the general plan is thinking about doing in the future is, you know, banning, you know, daycares, residential, things like that. You know, we'd be left with commercial. What would you see done with that property if you were the owner of the land, I guess?
I would try and come up with some type of design or configuration if I sought to make it a residential piece of property that would be consistent with the future planning of the city of Fresno. That would ensure that if I put a family in there, their children are going to have the same benefits as my children. I mean, there are studies which are being done which shows that any child who stays near a freeway is more prone to illness as a result. So I cannot, myself, I don't own the property, but you're asking me personally, and in my heart, I would say to you most honestly, that is what I would do. It would be consciousness above income.
So it would be more than 500 feet to, you know, for that property, it would be outside of the property to go 500 feet. So the property owner would be left with just commercial?
If that would be my resulting decision, I would maybe try to put in a car wash, something that would be accommodating to the lot size, that would not expose people to the particulate matters from the freeway that are present and the other traffic which comes through there, which is heavy equipment as well. The bordering side, which you cannot see there, there is industry to the, to the west of that where heavy vehicular traffic is also. And then you have, to the south of it, you have White's Bridge, or 180 is what they call it now. But you have White's Bridge, which is still utilized. So, and the airport. So what I'm saying is, it is important for us to have future development within our community. It is very important. And we do need single-family residents in our community. But we also want to do the right thing in so doing it, not just haphazardly.
So I know what the general plan, we're trying to, you know, do the infill, you know, so we don't sprawl in more. This is where it gets kind of messy when you want infill, you want it kind of near transit like freeways, but then you run into this where it's very close to the freeway.
Yes, I have, thanks to one of your assisting planning director, Mr. Keith Bertle, I have had exposure to the, pardon me, the 2025 plan and what is trying to be accomplished in the city as well as in with West Fresno. And unfortunately, historically, we did not have for our community the same oversight, shall I say, or the same insight as a related development as it did in the broader segment of Fresno. Thus, we are left with what you're seeing at this point in time. And to continue in that vein, though it may be necessary to make that a, I don't, you can't even make it a park. It's something that's there. What are you going to do with it? And I understand the gentleman's predicament, and I hope he understands where we're coming from. But I would much rather see something commercial on that property than a single-family resident for people to live in a situation where we know from categorical evidence that placing a home that close to a freeway only jeopardizes those who must reside within it. And that is our complaint.
So how about the, putting trees in the back and heavy-duty filters, would that be enough?
Because if you look at the freeway, the freeway actually rises above the property. So what happens is, as a particulate drifts over, you cannot filter out that much of it through an air conditioning unit by staying inside because it's sucking air. And all you're doing is allowing that to go into the environment. They will be cool. You know, they will be cool within, but that doesn't help what they breathe into their systems, their body from that polluted air. And that is the problem we have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions of the appellant at this time? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in support of this project? Anyone from the public who would like to speak in support? Is there anyone from, all right? State your name and address when you come up.
My name's Dale Mel. Office address is 2090 North Winery in Fresno, California. I'm a land surveyor. We've been working with Mr. Eller with the lot line adjustment and processing the various applications to present the project and actually develop two buildable lots here. And I think there's something we've kind of lost a little perspective of. I'm kind of a numbers guy, being a surveyor. And looking at this image up here, it's really hard to imagine, and I think Randy kind of alluded to that, was where is 50 feet in relation to this right of way? And I don't know if, Israel, do you have any other mapping, maybe the lot line adjustment application that actually shows the actual property dimensions that we're dealing with here? Because I think one interesting point is that the longest leg of that lot on the east side is 150, 155 feet of depth to the middle of the road. There we go. So we're looking at one site that's going to require the setback encroachment. And the city does provide for kind of a displacement area. If you encroach with a percentage of your lot into a setback, you can offset that by increasing a setback on another portion of that lot. The site plan that's being proposed for what we're showing as the adjusted parcel B is the smallest parcel that Mr. Eller owns. That house sets back, as we've identified, a portion of that would be within nine feet of, at its greatest dimension, nine feet into that 50-foot setback line, which is kind of a diagonal line through the lot. So that may be nine at one corner, but five at another corner. And that lot being 43 feet in width, the building being proposed is 18 to 20 feet. So we have 24 feet that actually is of a dimension that would be not occupied by a structure. So we're talking just a small square footage that actually encroaches within that 50-foot setback. And really, if we're concerned about particulates, it's not really within that 50 foot we're concerned with because children play outside a larger backyard. They would be playing within that area. We're looking at noise mitigation, and that's what Israel referenced is to come back. Is that my timer going off over there?
Yes, if you could wrap up.
As a fellow Toastmaster with Randy, I'm kind of cognizant of this timing issue. And so is there a green light that's going to come on, or is that already gone?
It's gone, so, if you could wrap up.
Quickly, I think what we, then to wrap it up, is that we're talking a minor area for an infill project, a residential need, affordable housing, and an appropriate setting for affordable housing in this area is here, not commercial use, which we really don't have room for parking even on a commercial use. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Don't go too far.
Yeah, unfortunately, you can't defer your time.
I do have a question, though, for Mr. Mel.
Sure, Commissioner Reed?
May I borrow you again? The 41-foot setback or, you know, trying to determine the 41 feet that we're talking about that is proposed, is that for 342 or is that for 338?
That would be for 342, is my understanding of the only application at this time for the variance. Is that correct?
Okay, so we're not at this point dealing with the issue of how far back the setback is for 338? We are dealing with both? Okay, so is, is, is this full lot line or the full outline of the property, that segment that extends the farthest to the north, I'm assuming, on the eastern side, that is where the 41-foot encroach, or the 41-foot setback applies?
The house is, is flat. The house is flat in the rear. So let's say the rear is, let's say it's here.
Right.
At its closest location.
And you're, right now, your mouse is at 342. You're in that 342 address, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So measuring the closest from this, the freeway right of way to this house is 41. The house is at a further distance in this area.
Okay, further from the freeway, and it's closer to the freeway as you go east?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and then as you shift over to the 338 parcel right next door to it, do you have a, what is the, what would be the setback of that eastern corner?
At its closest location, that way the applicant doesn't have to come back. We allow the same setback, so 41 feet, even though there's not a proposed house, we're allowing a setback reduced to 41 feet.
Okay, so it'd be the same amount?
Yes.
In both situations?
Yes.
Okay. And then, Israel, while you're there, I have another question for you. In the packet, there is included a set of guidelines for infill parcels of land. Do all of those design guidelines apply to this project, the sighting of this house?
They do apply, yes.
Okay. Because looking at the house from the photo that the applicant has provided, it doesn't look like it comes anywhere close to conforming to those requirements at this point, just visually.
Right.
So we're talking about a lot of renovation that's going to be done to this?
Yes, we're going to.
Home?
When he submits his elevations, we're going to require some upgrade to, to the facade of the house.
Okay, and those upgrades would be consistent with all of the requirements set forth in these guidelines?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions? For the applicant or the public speaker?
For the applicant.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You referenced that this is going to be a rental. Are you going to manage this property yourself?
That's correct.
Because until your surveyor drew our attention to the lot line adjustment, I had not seen the Hovenazian name on here, and I'm very concerned about that.
Yes, Hovenazian actually is to the west there at 348.
So he is not the record owner of this property?
No, if you did a public record search, you would see Patrick Eller. That's me.
Okay, I'm looking at this document that was just on the screen. And it says, record owners are you and David B. and Linda R. Hovenazian.
Yeah, he's probably mentioned there because actually he's involved in the lot line adjustment as well.
Okay.
Yeah, because I gave him six feet for 348 to make him legal on that side.
All right. This is your property, you're going to manage this, you're not going to turn this over to the property manager who's been considered in the Hall of Shame for poor rentals that he has in this community and one of the worst. I just want to be real clear about that.
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
I do have some rentals in the city of Fresno. All the tenants have my phone number. I have three maintenance guys working full-time. If they have a concern, I'll have somebody over within an hour.
I just want to make sure you're going to be a responsible landlord.
I do have a reputation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in support of this project?
My name is William Sykes, or Bill Sykes. I prepared the plans and went through the process with the design considerations, working with staff on the building elevations. Yes, there's changes to be made, not manifest in the existing structure that are being addressed in the plans. Sound mitigation with the acoustics there, the types of caulking, you mentioned doors, the weather stripping, and the appearance curb appeal of the structure to conform to staff requirements that we've met in the past in the permit set of plans. And I don't like my name associated with the question with the neighbors to the west. I worked with Mr. Eller. I know some of his tenants. And I know his maintenance people, and they're on their toes. He's a respectable person in how he manages his property, or I would not be standing here. Neither would Mr. Mel, who has a fine reputation as a land surveyor.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in support of this project? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this project? Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? All right, since we had no one speaking in opposition, I'm going to close the public portion of the hearing, bring it back up to the commission for questions or comments. Commissioner Doherty?
I have a few questions for the staff. Thank you. What are the future plans, future general plans for this area, west side area, 500 feet next to the freeways or 41 feet? And what we are considering in our future general plan?
We don't, we're not anticipating a change at this point. So in our new municipal code, our update, it'll probably be, probably be at 50 feet from freeway right of way.
My second question is, did this matter go in front of the Plan Implementation Committee of District 3?
It did not go in front of them.
Why was that?
I'm sorry?
Why was that?
It, it was a project that was considered relatively minor. And I don't know for certain at the time if the District 3 committee was in formation at this time, at that time. However, we can take it back if that's, if that's your wish, or we can take it to the committee if that's your wish.
Don't most appeals come straight to us? Isn't that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, most, yeah, most, the appeals, if they're not resolved, they'll come to the planning commission, correct?
Thank you.
Additional questions? I have a couple. Keith?
I'd just like to comment on the issue with regard to the general plan. In the workshop discussion draft of the Healthy Communities element, we did indicate that we understand the CARB recommendation for 500 feet. And we did put it in as a sort of a bracketed recommendation. We brought that to your attention during the workshop. In fact, I think it was just a week ago. We're struggling with that, trying to figure out what it means, what kind of other mitigations would be required. And I think the comments from the Golden West Side Planning Committee are And I think the comments from the Golden West Side Planning Committee are relevant to what we're all trying to figure out. How do we deal with that? And then also, when Andy Hansen-Smith brought up, and we're trying to figure out how we do infill, how we mitigate that, do we do filters? I mean, how do we deal with these kinds of things?
And that, my comments want to piggyback on that.
I want to make sure we haven't concluded.
The CARB recommendation is based on exposure to pollution, and I have to tell you, I was sidebar-ing a little bit here with Roy, I would much rather live here than up on I-11 and Friant. So it's based on your exposure to pollution coming from traffic. And in all honesty, the load right now, right here, is relatively low. 180 ends right there. We do not have a lot of traffic right there. The other thing that I think we need to consider is that the sector of automobile and diesel truck pollution, that emission source, is the emission source that is being most aggressively targeted on a state level. And the reductions that we're going to see in the next 10 years with regard to that sector are going to be some of the greatest reductions that we'll see from any sector over the next 10 years. That is not to say that diesel emissions, if you live on the 101 in Los Angeles, and you're 50 feet from it, yeah, that's a huge health impact, and I would not want my kids playing in a yard that was 50 feet from that. But I don't think, I think that the recommendation from CARB means that you do have to take some of this and critically weigh it. Are you looking at a 101 with a F traffic load, with a lot of diesel truck traffic, or are you looking at something a little bit different? And I think in this case, we are. So I just wanted to kind of add that to the discussion. It is a, it is a conversation that, as Keith just pointed out, is evolving because of our need to stop sprawling. This issue only becomes more and more important. And fortunately, we don't have a lot of these lots throughout the city, but I do think that we're going to need to be really kind of critical in how we address them. So I'm actually in, in support of the director's decision here. Additional questions or comments? Commissioner Hanson-Smith?
You were talking about diesel and traffic through that area. Doesn't there, there's a lot of diesel trucks just, you know, through the farms that are further west on 180 going through there?
Not relative to folks living on the 99. I mean, you just don't have the load. The load of truck traffic in the valley is farm-to-market, moving things to our coastal cities through the state on I-5 and on the 99.
That's probably true. And is diesels 10 times worse than cars? Is that what I kind of remember?
And that's not a number that we can give you. It depends, the newer diesel trucks are going to be cleaner than an older automobile. And then you have electric vehicles coming out that have zero emissions. So you, you have an industry sector that is changing dramatically. We just commissioned 50 UPS trucks two weeks ago, all-electric. They're, I saw one at Fig Garden the other day, and they're big. You know, they're not the little trucks, they're big trucks. It is a quickly evolving sector, the mobile source sector. And that's not to say that we don't need to, I mean, the gentleman's right, it is diesel, diesel particulates are very, very dangerous. I just don't think this area is one where you're going to be. I would rather live here, from a health perspective, than in old Fig, where you've got everyone using their wood-burning fireplaces, you know? I just think there's a, you know, you, it not, not all areas are the same, even though they may appear to be on paper.
And do, do most of the farm diesel trucks, are they usually old in our valley, or?
It depends. There are some, there are some very old trucks, but they're all under regulation, and by 2015, they were all, even those ones that are used one month a year, will have to have some type of retrofit or replacement device on them to clean them up. So like I said, it's a very quickly moving sector. Those trucks that are used kind of year-round, ARBs already starting to give tickets out to those trucks that have high mileage, that are older trucks, that are, that have fallen under the, and it's an ARB regulation, that have fallen under the regulation and have not upgraded, because this has been going on for several years. They, actually, I think, I'm not supposed to say this, but they have an enforcement day coming up in the next couple of weeks, and they had one before Christmas where they come out and make a big deal.
That's, that's good to hear.
Mr. Dwar?
I have a comment and as well as suggestion, and I echo Mr. Hanson-Smith, Commissioner's concern about dust. If a property owner can plant some trees with no sprawling roots behind the property, which can reduce the effect on human body of dust and the, and other particles of CARB, that can be good for those tenants living in that property, and if that can be a condition by the city, if possible.
Can we condition a couple more trees, Israel?
Yes, you can add that. Right now, there's, there's a requirement for one street tree, which will go in the front. However, you can condition there to be a tree behind each property.
Thank you, and I want if it can be incorporated in that condition or in approval condition.
We'll have to put that in the motion, whoever wants to say the motion. Yeah. Commissioner Reed, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, you know, kind of struggling with the decision for the reasons that I said before, and I appreciate the chair's explanation of progress that is being made and will continue to be made, you know, in the coming years to reduce particulate pollution and diesel particulates and those types of things. Nonetheless, I still think that we should be moving farther away from freeways rather than moving closer to them. That said, we're always going to be coming up with these challenges from time to time of these oddly sized parcels, and reconciling that with the need to provide opportunities for developers to do something productive with these smaller infill parcels. So if there is a motion made by one of my colleagues here to add the condition that there be additional trees in the back of the property in order to try to mitigate some of that potential pollution effect and noise effect and visual effect for, for that matter, then that's something that I think I could support.
Commissioner Medina?
I very much appreciate and respect the work of the Golden West Side Committee and what they're doing for bringing attention to the rebuilding and revitalization of that community. As Commissioner Reed has just stated, this is one of those difficult intersections that we come to from time to time. I'm pleased to hear, Mr. Eller, that you're not associated with Hovenazian, because I might be going in a completely different direction that I'm prepared to do right now, and that is to support a motion, as indicated by Commissioner Reed at this time. And the difficult, the difficulty is, we do want to see infill development in these lots. You've been, or the applicant has been struggling with this the better part of six years, if not more than that, and your investment in this property as well, and your willingness to put some rental housing here. I do share the concerns about air quality, but the chair's discussion did sway me in a different direction. I do understand that the industry is changing, and that there are going to be requirements made, changes made, and so I am inclined to support the motion, as indicated by my colleague here, Commissioner Reed. And I would encourage the Golden West Side group to continue with their advocacy, because we do need to hear these kinds of issues, and we do need to hear more on, as we, as we continue to move forward with finalizing the 2035 plan.
Commissioner Hanson-Smith?
I think probably the 41 feet is too, too small, so I'm going to, not going to vote in favor of this. I know Bakersfield goes 30 feet, but that's way too small, too, so I will not be in favor of this for the, that reason.
Are there any other questions or comments? Would entertain a motion? Anyone interested?
Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to make the motion. Just want to clarify with Israel again, the current conditions for residential development on that property, the infill requirements and guidelines, would only at this point require one tree? Is that what you were saying?
The one tree is, the one tree is a municipal code requirement. So yes, there would be one tree at the front that would be required. However, our condition is, we did not require a tree at the rear, but I understand that.
Yeah, that's going to be the nature of the motion that I make. I just want to determine what the capacity for trees would be on that property, to make it a reasonable condition, but at the same time, one that has the desired effect. So is there a, can I ask for a recommendation from staff on, you know, how to phrase that so that we get, again, the desired result from adding a tree or two to the back of the property?
I understand what you're looking for. You want something to mitigate, excuse me, any particulates or any sound. What I can do is ask our person who reviews our landscape plans and have them make a recommendation.
And I'd love to do it tonight, if we can figure out a way to get this done. I just need some guidance on how to do it effectively.
Commissioner Reed, one option that you may have before you is that certainly you can make a motion to approve the item with the, with the stipulation that an adequate landscaping plan that, that is submitted for the rear portion of the property, subject to the approval of the director. That, and then that could certainly include a couple of trees, two or three trees, or some type of mitigation that you're, that this commission is talking about. So we could certainly, you can make that as part of your motion, and it'll be part of the conditions of approval.
Okay. All right. Then with that, I would like to move staff recommendation, and all that that entails. And with the condition of a stipulation that an adequate landscaping plan be reviewed and approved by the director, that requires at least two additional trees in the rear of the property that provides some barrier between the housing unit and the freeway. Is that sufficient?
Motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Reed, a second by Commissioner Dwar. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Name.
With that, the motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to new item 8C, Workshop on the San Joaquin River Parkway.
Mike, do you say anything? Yourself, and just say that you're here to present this item, and go about it.
Well, good evening, commissioners. My name is Dave Kaler. I serve as Executive Director of the San Joaquin River Parkway and Conservation Trust, and I really appreciate the opportunity to give you an overview of the San Joaquin River Parkway and talk about some of the important issues, especially those related to the general plan update process that you're, you've embarked on and so forth. I might mention a couple of handouts that you have ahead of time. I have a copy of this PowerPoint that I'll go through for you. Also, there's a large 11-by-17 map of the Parkway, and you might just sort of keep that handy as, as we go through. There might be some things you want to reference back to the map. Another handout tonight was, is the Short Term Transportation Plan by Nelson Nygaard, and that's just a reference document. I'll, I'll mention it a few times in my presentation, but it's more of a reference document for you tonight. What I have prepared to do for tonight is to provide an overview of the San Joaquin River Parkway. We probably all are coming with different understandings and knowledge about the San Joaquin River Parkway, so I thought I would just take a minute to talk about where we're at today with the Parkway establishment and the progress to date. Also want to focus on how we're going to connect people of the city of Fresno to the San Joaquin River Parkway, and in particular, touch on some of those areas that we'd ask you to consider as you look toward the general plan update. I might mention that I served on the Citizens General Plan Update Committee from the prior general plan, and have a little bit of knowledge of the amazing dedication that you all have to that process, as well as the current Citizens Committee. And when we, back then, I think the main issue related to the Parkway was, there were, there was lots of speculation about urban development and the river bottom and so forth. And I'm glad to see that as a community, we've kind of protected the river bottom, and I think moved on from, from there. But I think the key issue facing the Parkway with respect to the land use planning and so forth, that we have challenges as a community, is how are we going to get the citizens of the city of Fresno there to the Parkway so they can enjoy it? The San Joaquin River Parkway is a regional amenity, and it takes a great amount of cooperation between agencies and a lot of, I often kind of say it's the royal we working on it, because it crosses a lot of different boundaries and so forth. And I might just take a minute to talk a little bit about the key entities and roles and so forth. I mentioned that I am Executive Director of the San Joaquin River Parkway and Conservation Trust. I've had the good fortune of being Executive Director for about 22 years now. And I might mention that our role in the San Joaquin River Parkway, as it emerged, back in the mid-1980s, there were development plans for urban development and the floodplain that caused our community to get concerned, and our community decided to form a land trust, which we are a nonprofit community organization, land trust, and formed in 1988. And along the way, we have acquired many of the properties, most of them facilitated acquisitions, where we've put together funding and acquired them and conveyed them to the state of California. But we also do a lot of program services like restoration, trail design, environmental education, a lot of program services. Another significant entity to be aware of is the role of the San Joaquin River Conservancy. So we are a nonprofit community organization. The San Joaquin River Conservancy is a state agency. It's a state agency under the California Resources Agency, and we helped to support its implementation in the early 90s, because it was identified, again, the cooperative nature of this between the two counties, Madera and Fresno, and the city of Fresno, saw that there needed to be a coordinating entity, because as you look at that map of the Parkway, it's running through three land use jurisdictions, the county of Fresno, the county of Madera, and predominantly, the city of Fresno. And of course, the city of Fresno has all of the urban edge essentially with the Parkway. But it is the San Joaquin River Conservancy that served in that coordinating role, adopted a San Joaquin River Master Plan that guides the Parkway's implementation. And then, as the three land use jurisdictions have updated their general plans, they have incorporated the San Joaquin River Master Plan into the, into the policies accordingly to how it fits within those entities. it fits within those entities. For example, your general plan that's in effect today has 19 pages of policies that are quite good to help implement and facilitate the implementation of the San Joaquin River Parkway. So there are many other nonprofits that help along the way, some that you probably know well, like Tree Fresno, and others you may not have heard so much about, but like River Tree Volunteers and so forth. But there's a lot of nonprofits and organizations now helping out. The fundamental goals of the Parkway are to protect the natural and cultural resources. Our organization's motto is creating and protecting the San Joaquin River Parkway for everyone. And it's really kind of that everyone that I have concern about that I think we need to focus on with the general plan update. But definitely protecting, there's incredible fish and wildlife resources in the river, of course, the flood plain, protecting agriculture, some really great Native American and historic sites along the San Joaquin River. Another fundamental goal is, of course, to provide outdoor recreation and education opportunities. And a highlight of that is a continuous multipurpose trail system. The trail system is actually designated on the California Trails Map from Highway 99 all the way to the crest of the Sierra, and the Parkway reach is an important part of that. And another fundamental goal is the socioeconomic benefits that the Parkway can bring to us, enhancing quality of life for residents. These amenities, like open space amenities on a regional level like this, are well documented to be able to attract jobs and keep people -- attract jobs and keep people in those jobs in the region. The benefits in the last three or four years to public health. For example, there's recent research out from a university showing that for every dollar spent on implementing trails, $3 is spent to communities' public health benefits just for getting people outdoors. Well, looking at the map, the San Joaquin River Parkway is the section of the San Joaquin River from Fryant Dam to Highway 99. And as you look at this map, I might mention that this is kind of where the royal "we" comes in at. Our community back in the mid-1980s, well, first of all, let me mention the dark green splotches of land that you see along the map are all public lands. There's more than 4,000 acres now in public ownership. When our community embarked on the Parkway effort, the only pieces of public land along the river were Woodward Park at Highway 41 and Lost Lake Park up near Fryant. All the other pieces of grain have been acquired, and they're held in a mosaic of ownerships. The majority of land ownership is held by either the San Joaquin River Conservancy or the Department of Fish and Game. We've acquired many of those and conveyed them to the state, but our land ownership in this reach of the river is about, is four parcels totaling about 120 acres. But the majority of it is owned by public agency. I also mentioned that the plan is to include a continuous multipurpose trail from Highway 99 to 41, and today, there's the largest segment in place is from Highway 41 up to the river center, the Co-Callawell River Center just on the other side of 41. You see that in a purple, thin purple line there on your map. But there is another piece in place today down by Riverside Golf Course near Highway 41. We'll mention that. As you look at this, the -- this map is created by the San Joaquin River Conservancy, and it's a composite of planned facilities as well as facilities that exist today. The green are properties that are owned by the public today, but facility-wise, those that are in the light ivory-type caption are facilities that exist today, and those that are in the dark blue are facilities that are planned. And you notice River West, the project that has gotten a lot of attention lately, and we'll mention that a little bit later, but River West is one of those planned. Well, one of the key features of the Parkway is its trail system, and I wanted to just mention, and I'm using the conceptual plan that we did for River West as an example, but the point of this slide here is really to highlight that there are different types of trails cross-sections. So a trail is not a trail kind of thing. When we're planning especially a large open space piece of property, there's -- the Louis S. Eaton Trail is kind of the people mover trail of the San Joaquin River Parkway, and that's a multipurpose trail paved, 12-foot section, six-foot jogging shoulder, and also in areas that are wide enough, we detach equestrian trail for equestrian riders, too. And that's the Louis S. Eaton Trail cross-section. That trail is also to serve as part of our regional bicycle trails and commuter trail system. So it's a dual -- it form -- it is to provide two functions. One, of course, is outdoor recreation, but the other is also to function well in the regional bicycle commuter, as a commuter trail. For example, American River Parkway's Jedediah Smith Trail, a lot of people use that trail to get to and from work. Some live on one side of the river, get to the other, that kind of thing. That's the vision for the Louis S. Eaton Trail. Riding and hiking trail is kind of a step, a notch down from that, either a natural trail or decomposed granite with equestrians and hikers sharing it together, kind of in areas where there'll be more volume, but it isn't sort of that dual-function commuter trail. And then at the top, the least impactful and that, that can get closest to the river and provides people with the nature hike type of experience is just the hiking trail cross-section. And so the arrows that I have placed is when we did our conceptual plan for the River West, these were the three different trail cross-sections. Well, I'd like to now talk about the challenges we have about commuting, connecting the majority of our citizens to the San Joaquin River Parkway. And I thought I would start with this map, which is a map out of the handbook of the Indians of California, which primarily shows, I highlighted in blue, the section of the San Joaquin River. And if you want to place the river in our community here, where it starts to bend up north toward the bay is where Fire Bay is. But if you follow that blue line up about midway, you'll see Little Dry Creek, and Little Dry Creek comes into the river about six miles upstream of Highway 41. So you'll see Fort Miller referenced there. So basically, the section from Fort Miller to, and then follow it down to where you see Herndon located on this historic map, that's essentially the Parkway reach. But the point being that people have had access, and of course, people are here because of the river. I remember the Fresno Bee had an editorial titled, "The River is Special Because It's Wet." And it's definitely the case, key to our lives, all the aesthetics of it, and all of the necessity of food and fiber and so forth. And then, moving on from there, we continued to be connected to the San Joaquin River for a long time. And in fact, there was, and as you probably know, the Fresno Traction Company ran from downtown Fresno right out to the banks of the San Joaquin River in the area where Scout Island and Figgar and Golf Course is today, Fresno Beach, a huge recreation area for the city of Fresno. And you literally could get on the train, rail car right outside of City Hall and go down to the San Joaquin River. So in some ways, we've kind of, we've done a great job in terms of acquiring land for the public to use, but we have a lot of challenges to get people there again and folks using it. Well, about, well, it really kind of started with some intentional efforts that our organization did to work, to provide our outdoor experiences to underserved youth in Fresno. And as we began to work with the families, we realized that a primary barrier was actually just for families to get from central Fresno to the San Joaquin River. And so we had a good fortune of having a grant, not huge sums of money in the world of transportation, but a little bit of funds, that we hired Nelson Nygaard to take a look, and they were looking at it from the whole Parkway perspective and all just zero in on the city of Fresno. But the, we worked with this consultant who developed some observations and also some recommendations about things to look going forward to. So again, this is coming out of stark realization that in order to realize the benefits that a regional amenity can bring to Fresno, Fresno has to be able to get to the regional amenity. And one of those things that the consultant talks about, and that's where you can, in this, I mentioned this was a reference document, this next section of information comes out of there, but talked, they define and discuss the idea of walk shed, which is simply the area from which people will walk to the San Joaquin River. And their opinion is that a person will walk 15 to 20 minutes to reach an attraction, which is roughly about one mile. So if you were to draw that mile along the river corridor, the vast majority of the city, of course, is outside of that. And also, it's also, the majority of it is outside what most people will ride their bike for a reasonable distance to get to the San Joaquin. Some of our best friends live near, in the Fresno High area, and one of their favorite activities to do with their kids on the weekend is pile the bikes in the car, drive out to Woodward Park, and then experience the trail system from there. And I suspect whether it's by that or now that our buses have bikes on them and so forth, we need to be thinking about how folks can do that. So for most residents of the city of Fresno, they can only access the Parkway by car or by transit. And if you look at the transit, public transit that we have provided, there's only two places where you can take a bus and get to Parkway lands today fairly closely. Line 30 on this map stops at Audubon and Fryant Road, which is the corner of Woodward Park. So if you, if you ride your bike, it's easy to take, get your bike off there and hit the trail system and go. If you were going to the river and walking it from that stop, it's a good two-mile walk, probably, or at least a mile and a half to the river's edge, which for many of us isn't a problem, but for a lot of folks, especially elderly or young children, that's, you know, that's not going to work. The other location is line 26, which is at Palm and Knees. Well, the point just being that as we go along here and we have opportunities to develop new opportunities for our public transit to get to these public lands, we really need to do that and take advantage of it. This next slide really points out, and this is, you know, the unfortunate nature of this is when you really lift up the hood and look at it, there is a real equity issue here with respect to folks being able to get to the river. You not only have the problem of, well, how does all of Fresno get to the river, but you also have a section where it's also those that have the highest level of income, it's easier to get to the river than those in lower incomes. And if, again, if you kind of look at this bracket where the walkability was within a mile of the river corridor, bicycles access would give you a little bit broader reach. But when you get into central Fresno, there's a real disparity with our citizens being able to get to the river. And so, for example, in this most recent issue that came before the Council on River West, we, the Fresno, the Youth Council for Sustainable Communities took a look at that project and then really decided to get involved because, you know, the point being, well, we need every opportunity we can to be able to get to the river. So that's why groups like the Center for Multicultural Cooperation and others are really seeing that their voice needs to be heard on this. Well, I'm going to talk briefly about the River West project that you may have read about. And with River West, and you can look on, look at the big Parkway map, I first should mention that the planning area of River West includes a couple of properties in Madera County, as well as this key one in the city of Fresno. So on the other side of the river, there's two properties that make up about 800 acres. And this one that was Spano River Ranch on the Fresno side is more than 400 acres. And this map graphic that you have here is the result of a planning effort that's underway to do, to plan an extension of the Louis S. Eaton Trail and to make this land available to the public. You'll may have, when the previous slide that I showed with the trail cross-sections was our organization's conceptual design, which the Conservancy then said, yes, we'd like something like that, and they gave grants to the city of Fresno and Madera County to plan it. So that moved forward, and then that plan changed dramatically and not to the good, in our opinion, and largely because of a result of bluff homeowners wanting to push the trail as far away as possible from their homes and also limit access, especially take-away vehicle access from the public road at Riverview Drive. But as you look at this, and highlighted in yellow, this is actually language that's in the plan that says, "Pedestrian access and portaging of bikes and boats for the very strong will be provided via stairs from either end of the existing bluff trail." Well, I mean, language like that's, I mean, it's silly to, to the idea that you're only planning access for the very strong, especially when there's other options available. And I might mention that as this plan is in front of you, just showing the parking and staging along Highway 41 for River West, in order to access that parking lot, if you're familiar with how you do that, is you have to get on Highway 41 and cross the river, and you would go across into Madera County, get off at the Children's Cobb Ranch Road, double back around on the old Highway Road, double back around on the old Highway 41, and then come under. So it actually adds a 10-mile round trip, vehicle trip, the closest interchange being at Friant On Ram. And, well, the project like this should be able to be in a position to reduce vehicle trips and get some net gain to our air quality issues as opposed to adding an additional 10-mile round trip for a lot of citizens and so forth. And so, we know that'll all get looked at in the environmental process, but these are all planning issues, and they are things that you can have a direct input. The mid-access point that we had hoped to have a vehicle entrance point was at Riverview Drive, which is accessed off of Audubon. And of course, the Council on a five-to-two vote is sending a recommendation to your commission to put a policy in the general plan to not allow vehicle access there. But this is what, this is the road. It's 64 feet wide curb to curb, and it's accessed at the midway point. The next graphic has a, the black and white graphic is out of the 1985 Spano River Ranch draft DIR that shows that road was planned multimodal. And also, it was to provide vehicle access to hundreds of homes and an 18-hole golf course there. And that was, you know, prior to it being conserved as open space. So when we bought this land, and it's actually, and it's insured access via title insurance, but we thought we were buying ready-made access into the property. But now, if that recommendation has its way, that there'll only be pedestrian and bicycle access there.
Were their houses already there when that 1985 plan is about the same time as?
There were probably two-thirds to three-quarters of the homes there. I remember, because when we were bringing state officials there and asking them to pitch in to help buy it, we could go to empty lots and just look over, and it was easy to find a spot like that. So, but there were definitely a good number of homes, most of the homes were built there. I might mention also, out of that same plan, there were three Vista Points planned in that area, and the, due to the neighborhood concerns, those Vista Points were eliminated. So basically, the Vista Points, as well as now the access point, are eliminated, or at least the vehicle, it hasn't happened yet, hopefully it won't, but that's the will of the council. So I might mention, one good thing, I guess, that maybe came out of the heated debate that's taken place so far, is that folks are rallying around the idea of developing a staging, parking and staging at the Palm Bluffs or Palm and Knees area, which is that it's not actually part of the River West plan, it's a little, it's a couple parcels below, but if it could all be connected, it would provide a good staging area. I don't think it's a replacement for it, but I think it's basically what we have to work with now, and so we'll be putting all of our energies to help with that. I might mention, and the reason I mention in this here tonight is also with respect to what's, will come up in the general plan update, is a focused attention on this is going to be needed. You kind of see a messy aerial here with letters and some figures, and I would just like to just briefly take you through this little quagmire here, because it will show you an example of how your direction can actually help resolve some of this. You'll see a line lettered E and another line lettered D. Those two lines represent two different public access easements that were negotiated between the city of Fresno and the developers of the area, one with Mr. Totilian and the other with the Spano family. Both of those public easements have language in them that says there can only be public access there as the same as there is at Riverview Drive, which means, which was an issue we raised, was that if you take away the vehicle access at Riverview Drive, you're essentially taking this away too. We're, you know, it's kind of the, what we heard back was, well, don't worry, we'll renegotiate the easements. Well, let's make sure those, you know, it takes Mr. Totilian and the Spano family to agree to renegotiate those easements, this, and totally agree, it's just a to-do. Another issue there is that curb to curb, the road behind the GB3 is 22 feet wide, and so Mr. Vic Rosnowski offered to provide more land to widen that, but that is a step that needs to happen. And then, all of the land where you, below that area, is still part of the Pine Dale Dump closure, so it has not been closed out, and it has environmental issues like methane gas and so forth. And that remediation will need to take place before the public can go across that land. We have two parcels that we've exercised our option on in this very same area, and I'm well aware of the environmental dump closure issues, and there, it's not an easy fix. It's certainly something that can be remedied. The point being is that that is an area of focus as this goes through, if it can be looked at with respect to policies that can help that staging and parking area happen, it's an area that kind of needs to be figured out.
So Dave, real quick, on that issue, so if this was able to be developed and landfill could be remediated and all, et cetera. So then that would provide adequate parking space and at a reasonable distance and, I guess, elevation to the river? That would be similar to what the original River West parking area was designed to do?
Yes, we, where the circle blue is on there, that is probably where the staging and parking area would be in that area, very close to the river. Depending on the environmental issues, they're going to have a lot to do with how large that parking can be, so that is something that, you know, will have to get worked out. So it's very encouraging, if these issues can be addressed, it's encouraging what possibilities are there that Chairman Holt comments about it being a driver to our economic activity to the commercial residents there is good.
Cocktails after your, your day on the river would be perfect.
Yeah.
Especially if you'd taken the bus down with your bicycle, and you'd jog back on the bus.
And Vic Rosnowski told me he wants to open a bait shop, too. So, yeah. Oh, gosh. Let's see, I wanted to go back. Well, so regardless of how that parking thing gets resolved at the midway point, whether it happens or not at Riverview Drive, there's one other issue, and I'm really using River West as an example, it's a key thing for site-specific, but it's also an example of what needs to be considered for the Parkway as a whole. And I just want to make a comment, the city of Fresno's Bicycle, Pedestrian and Trails Master Plan is really an excellent plan. And so on the right, the graphic here with the, is the map, plan map directly out of that plan. And I'd like for you to take a look at how the master plan put the trail line for the bicycle master plan. And reflect back on, and something I mentioned earlier was that the Lewis S. Eaton Trail is to function both as a recreational trail and as part of our regional bicycle plan. And if you look at the graphic on the left, the blue line is the trail, proposed trail line at the moment. I don't think it will survive environmental review for the reason I'm going to mention, but it's kind of what we're up against in some ways. But if you were on your bicycle and can imagine yourself entering from Riverview Drive here, this midway point, and let's say you live here and your job's at Children's Hospital, or vice versa, you live in the ranchos and you're going to drive, ride your bike to your job on the Fresno side and want to come up through Riverview Drive. When you come down, you're going to want to make that immediate, let's say you're going to Madera County, you're going to want to make that immediate right-hand turn with your bicycle and get to old Highway 41 so you can get over. But if you look at the left plan, if you actually were to do this, you would come down with your bike, you'd be forced to make a left-hand turn, and then you'd get to either a staircase or switchbacks, that you'd have to walk your bike or what have you down, get over to the blue line, and then follow that sort of wild mouse kind of a ride along till you got over to...
Speaking of wild mice.
Oh. What's that?
You can point, you can point with the mouse.
Yes, oh.
Yeah, you can point with the arrow.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so then, the good commute route is to come in at Riverview Drive here and come down this way, go across 41, and you're right there at Children's. The awful commute route is to come in here, come down here, go through some stairs, over to here, and then follow this route around. As a practical nature, you wouldn't do it if you were a bicycle commuter. And so, the point being is, there is a form, and it isn't just all distance from closest, this tagline is "To and Along the River." Well, everyone wants the trail "To and Along the River," but I mentioned there are three different types of trail cross-sections, some are more appropriate to be right on the river's edge, and then this, there is this form and function that needs to be considered so we can actually have an alternative to cars and to have it be well-used. So actually, in conclusion, I'd like to leave you with this slide and suggest that there's really four key areas along the river corridor within the city of Fresno that need some attention. I mean, you have terrific staff that can help look at the policies that would be most effective in helping with these things. And I'll just mention these four and what the main issues are with them. In this area, Rice Road to Copper, there is some great opportunity actually off of, I believe, the city of Fresno's limits in the river bottom and at Lanes Road or Rice Road there. But that area, we have a 28-acre property right where the trail comes in, and there might be the potential for parking staging area to take place there in the future. And also, we're in negotiations with some nearby private landowners and the potential along Rice Road or right up there where Rice Road comes in exist. Another traffic and connection concern actually is right at the park-and-ride at Copper. That's, there's people that park in the park-and-ride, which is on the east side of Friant Road, and then the way that's designed, there really isn't a safe place for them to cross. And I see people all the time, you know, like, doing, you've probably done it, you know, you do that kind of look, and then the run across the, and those cars are going We have some safety and transit things that work there. Oh, and transit is also looking at extension. You know, I actually got laughed at from, our office is at the Koke-Hallowell Center for River Studies, and we moved our office there five years ago or something like that. And I called fax and asked the director there about, you know, I wanted to buy like transit passes for employees that wanted to take the bus, and the Copper River was being built out, and I said, I know you've got bus stops planned there, can I do, and it was kind of, I got this chuckle, it's kind of like, do you know how long it's going to be before there's a bus route out there? And so anyway, at least the planning for transit out in that area needs to happen. River West and Palm Bluffs, I think, did, you know, covered those issues, but again, there's the staging area at Palm and Knees that we want to get behind, and the city does too. I mean, there's an area of an agreement there, and, but there, no doubt can be some general PAM policies and focus there that can help. The other thing there that really needs to be watched is this form and function, so we end up with a trail system that functions in our regional trails connections. Going downriver, the next area where there's really a large track of public land, there's probably about 400 acres between Islewood and Milburn, that's accessed with a four-lane road and a median down the middle of it, Milburn. That land will be planned for public access by the Conservancy, and also if that can get an area focus in your general plan update. That's another longer-term excellent place that our citizens of Fresno can access the Parkway. And the, and the area down between the Santa Fe Track and, I spelled Santa wrong, I'm sorry about that. Anyway, the area down by the Santa Fe Track down to Camp P, or Camp Pachean, is a really neat area, and there's a lot of cooperative private, PG&E, the property that they own, that there's a good horse outfit that leases some of that, but PG&E's offered a trail easement through their land connecting to Camp Pachean. And then, I know that your planning staff is aware, but there's a real key connection that needs to be made from the PG&E's side over to the Riverside Golf Course area. And that's a real critical thing to have in the general plan update, because there's really kind of only route that that can go. And as that land is built out and developed, it's the kind of thing that a plan line is going to mean everything to making that connection. But also, in terms of on Highway 99, the ability to be an economic driver for businesses in there, there's, I'll give you an example of how important these general plan policies are as these things go along. Or, well, you know how important they are, but I'll give you an example of something that happened right there, which is just broke construction, the six-lane expansion and the new bridge that's being built over Highway 99. We tried like heck to get a bike lane designated across there, and they couldn't find, the Keltrans said, well, we could do it if we had a policy in the city's general plan and we had a matching policy in Madera County. And it was kind of weak language on the city's side and no language on the Madera side and kind of, we, so there's, they actually have built the capacity to do that, but it's not designated. So again, this is where this kind of thing becomes very important. Well, you've been very kind to give me this time to go through this. Well, you've been very kind to give me this time to, to go through this with you this evening, and I hope you have found these thoughts and information helpful to you, and be happy to answer any, any questions. And I trust this gets into the general plan update process.
Questions? Commissioner Medina?
Well, it's not so much the question as it is to express the concern here, and first of all, thank you, this has been very helpful for me to get a better understanding of the relationships here and the trust in the Conservancy, and get a better understanding and grasp of what all's at stake here, so I appreciate that.
Sure.
But I actually, just for the record, I want it noted that I have attempted to get this letter of recommendations that was submitted by our city manager, Scott, to this workshop that supposedly took place in December of 2012. And after two phone calls to staff with voicemail well over a month ago, several times requesting it from the DIES, I just want to be clear on what I'm asking for, and the handout that was given to us this evening that has a cover memo from you and is referencing a report, on page three of that report, under specific public access, River West open space area, I'm seeking the recommendations by the city manager, Mark Scott, in a letter to the council dated December 20th, 2012.
Right.
I'm told that letter doesn't exist, or can't be located, and I find that very hard to believe, that we cannot locate a letter that went to a council in a workshop, in a public workshop. So once again, for the record, I want to reiterate my request for the sixth or seventh time for such a letter, and that's, I'm directing that to staff as I look over at Keith.
Is, may I, I, well, I know, it actually is a staff memo.
Whatever it is, in whatever format it is, I want to see something that has, that, I'm not asking you to respond.
I know, but I'm actually trying to help whoever can get it for you.
I mean, it shouldn't require a private, my point being, it should not require the efforts of a private citizen to locate a public document. That's all I'm stating for the record. Thank you.
Excuse me, with all due respect, we've, I'm not gonna even comment and respond to that, but I, I take some offense to the commissioner's point of view on this. We will get the letter somehow. And what document are you referring to this evening, Mrs. Medina?
The January 18th, that was in our packet, or was in my packet anyway, to the City of Fresno Planning Commission, Attention to Jamie Holt, signed by Dave, and it has an attached report from Two M Associates.
And it references, there's a, there's a December 20th memo from Mark Scott to the council, and it's actually attached to the city council's agenda, so if you just go to the city council agenda online and download that document, it should be there.
It says it's referenced attached in here, and...
Yeah, and it might have been our fault for not, for not attaching it.
This first came to us when I thought the open space discussion was gonna be on, and I called two staff people requesting the attachment.
Right.
And I got this report again. And I asked for it again, and I got this report again. So I'm asking again.
All right.
It's on page three.
Are there additional questions at this time? I would like to move on from this issue.
Yeah, well, I might mention that they got revised, and there's a February 14th memo from Mark Scott that replaces the December 20th memo.
I'd like to request that too. Thank you.
And I can, I can leave that copy here to make it easy.
Additional questions at this time? Commissioner Reed?
Just a quick comment, and again echoing what Commissioner Medina was saying about gratitude for coming and laying this out for us and explaining it to us, you know, I've been very interested in the expansion of access to the river for, you know, over 20 years myself, something I follow closely and support where I can, and...
Yes, thank you.
There was some discussion at the council meeting when the talk about building out the access area and the parking lot, and who's gonna maintain it, and there's no money to do it, and all of those things that always come up when you're dealing with a public amenity, but to me, the argument is, without the vision, nothing happens. And so the, the trust, the Conservancy, the work that everyone is doing to continue to push this vision forward is just so important to our community, and I just want to, again, reiterate how thankful I am for the diligence that you and other River supporters have been putting towards making this vision a reality at some point in the future. I mean, obviously, there's a lot that's been done, it's been, we're, you know, making great steps every day, and there are occasional setbacks, but nonetheless, you have to have the vision, and I'm glad we have folks in the community who are working hard to make it a reality.
Thank you very much.
Additional questions or comments? Thanks again for coming, we appreciate your time. Moving on, reports by Secretary.
Before Dave leaves. So I want to thank you for coming. We kind of arranged this so you could get an opportunity that was not competing with a bunch of other things, and it seemed like this venue would be appropriate. There's obviously a lot of emotions going on with this River West things, there are a lot of different motives from different folks, and notwithstanding that, it sounds like the rub point is you anticipated for a long time that there would be an access at Riverview Drive. And there's been some organizing by the neighbors there to suggest that shouldn't happen.
Right.
And the real alternative, and I guess another issue is the location of the bike trails in the Parkway, and the distance they are, I mean, offering different alternatives. So the Riverview Drive is a major issue for you, the location of the trails is a major issue for you, the mitigation that's required at Palm Bluffs is an issue for you, and the reasonables of that access. And then you've mentioned a number of things we have to get together and talk about, because we're very willing to carry forward a number of recommendations, you know, to do the mitigation.
And just to chime in here, what would be really helpful for us is for you to almost bullet point your key recommendations, and I don't know if you've seen any of the chapters, but, but looking at any of the chapters will give you an idea of, of kind of the language and the way to go about doing that.
Okay.
So that, and I think we need to meet to make sure we have particular language, we need to get together on that, and I think, well, we'd like to, staff has strived to mitigate where we have a political path to mitigate, right? And I, and I guess we need to get the commission to weigh in, and I think that's where really, you know, I may be putting words in Ms. Medina's mouth, but there's a whole bunch of water under the bridge here that maybe we need to dam back up and take a look at the water, right? And I, I think that she wants to see some information that we've been, I've been asking for myself and haven't been able to obtain apparently the, the particular document, which we will, based on the dates I've got now. But I, I think that it's important to maybe express that there's a number of planning principles that perhaps we can talk about that need to be brought forward in the general plan, and need to be revisited by both the public and our legislators, and our advisory bodies as they look at this stuff, because I, I don't feel like there's been a coherent whole that's been presented in terms of the planning principles, the connectivity, the value of this asset that you are a steward of, and all these things, in a holistic context yet. It's been sort of, sort of a preemptive, you know, sort of thrust to frame how this should be handled, right? Which is the prerogative of the council, I'm not saying it isn't, but also the general plan is an open book until the general plan gets adopted. So maybe I'll just leave it at that, and I think we should schedule a meeting fairly quickly. We've got a draft, Parks Open Space and Schools chapter, which may not be as complete as we'd like it to be unless we can get together pretty quick, because I'm trying to, trying to get that out sometime next week, so you actually have a couple days to read it before a special workshop, or I can put it off until March, and we can just really jam up some things later in March. I'm, so when I say March, I mean March 20th, so I guess that's another consideration is, and the reason why I'm belaboring this a little bit, is how much, in terms of comprehensiveness in working with the Parkway, do you want in the workshop discussion draft?
Well, I'd like as much as, I think we would all like as much as possible, but at the same time, I don't want to get to a point where we're jammed up, as you say, at the end of March.
Okay, so I, maybe we just need to think about that, because I, I want to make sure we do some justice to the comprehensive presentation of this. That's, that's what I'm, you know, trying to...
Well, but we've all been a part of this as well, and I do think that, that we can add things, suggestions during that presentation as well. Commissioner Medina?
Yeah, I just, I, I wanted to get some clarification, because I saw in the paper where something got adopted last week, recommendations for the general plan, and when that comes to us, that just council recommendations, I don't understand the impact of that, and I do want to, I do want to concur with the chair's request to have some bulleted points, because it is, Keith is feeling my frustration, and just trying to get some basic information and understand this, before we get inundated with a bunch of stuff. And so what impact does that council action from last week have in our deliberations here, if any?
Well, it's my understanding that the council action is that they want some direction from us.
I'm sorry, they want what?
Direction from us.
I think they gave us direction. That's the impression I had.
I think, I think everything, they may accept with Riverview Drive.
Yeah. I said, "I want this in the general plan," as I heard.
The question you raised was actually, it's an excellent one, and it was a good part of the debate or discussion, because it was kind of like it was being argued both sides. It was, "Well, these are just recommendations, and then they'll get, you know, worked out through the general plan process," but yet, the weight behind the recommendations, it was like, so I have, what are the impact, I have the same question you do, and my understanding actually of the environmental review is, regardless of the recommendation, the alternative to provide the various alternative parking and so forth will have to get worked out, because you've got a, with that, only that one parking, you've got a 10-mile round trip, and that's gonna impact air quality, and the planning director from Madera County...
That's the other part of the confusion, there's what went to the council, there was the workshop, there's what went to the council last week, their action, there's what appears to be an environmental impact report that is coming later, after we go through this general planning process.
Well, our, our...
That could have some alternatives, or may have some say in what goes forward. And so I'm, I'm struggling to try to understand this whole thing, is basically what I'm saying.
There is a, there is a planning, a site-specific planning project for River West underway that will have an EIR. Everyone's agreed that it'll have a full EIR done on that project, and so, you know, in our minds, we thought that's where the, whether to include the staging or not, or how to do it, would all be at that, that EIR. But basically, it's now moved to the general plan update theater through the council's action. So as I see it, we've got two venues to be, to be part of.
Which is why going back to some bulleted points would be extremely helpful, I think, for us to begin to understand, well, what the process is about.
And I will tell you, the, the bottom line on all of this is going to be the public support of it, or non-support of it, one way or the other. I mean, I think you already have, and you know this, a very vocal group of neighbors, and I think that the onus will be on whether or not there's an equally vocal group that can sway the political powers.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty, I get that. The, the one thing that I think as leaders in various levels, I just hope people look at that map, and, you know, it really, there really, it's, there's a major equity issue going on with respect to getting people there, and there isn't a way to realize the benefits from a regional Parkway without getting a good amount of your populace to be able to experience it.
You're, you're speaking logically at this point.
I know.
Here's, here's another point of my confusion. I, I read your op-ed piece that was in the paper, and a day or two later, a week later, was an op-ed piece from one of the homeowners, Pete Mihas. They're about access. You know, if you read those two pieces, then you're crazy or they're crazy, and so that's the difficulty that I'm having in trying to reconcile, you know, you both want access, everybody wants access, nobody's denying the access. So that's why I'm trying to get a better understanding of what these issues are about, and I agree, it is a political decision in the end, and the political will, but as a commissioner, I also want to be as informed as I possibly can when it comes before this body, and to make a decision based upon the information that does come to us.
And I haven't had the chance to have the discussion with my board since last week on, you know, what, what do we do? There is, there is the possibility that something really nice at Palm Bluffs could happen. It is within the realm of feasibility, I just...
Is that what was called, the compromise or something, that was in the paper that was referenced as a compromise?
Yeah, I think, I think that's what they were talking about with Palm and Bluffs. But it isn't, I think the feasibility of Palm and Bluffs is, just because I've, I've read all the title issues, I know the physical constraints, I know the property, and it's not a cakewalk, but it, is it within the realm of possibilities? Yes, and so we're gonna put our shoulders to the wheel to, to see if that Palm Bluffs thing can work.
Additional questions, comments?
Chair, do you want to, I know it's late, but would you like Mr. Shannon Chaffin to respond more particularly to the issue of two EIRs, a specific plan and a general plan?
Not tonight. I think this issue has a lot more legs to it, and since we're gonna see or hear a full presentation on open parks and space and all of that, I think we need more information in front of us at this point. So, thank you, but no. Well, there's the map, there's the EIR that goes with the general plan, and then there's the specific one, yeah.
We've almost resolved that with downtown, so really, there's three EIRs and three plans, so...
Don't even start. With that, any reports by secretary? Any scheduled or communications? None, unscheduled commu-, oral communication? Seeing none, I'm gonna skip over that and adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.